The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we're low. There we go. Mine was really low, too. I think my kids were in here.
You think? Do they stand that on? We actually have a communication.
Ms. Mayor, there was a letter sent from the committee to Commissioner Jeff Riley, the talk to which this has been a package for anyone to comment on if they'd like to, but otherwise it says, please send it to the press. It is up.
Ms. Matthews.
Mr. Superintendent, do you know if we received any acknowledgement or response?
I have not received anything yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to accept and place on file.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First, I'd like to update the committee on the COVID data in the state schools. As of the timing of the report, I had written there was two cases in the district. So yesterday, there was two. So based on the available data, the CDC's recent guideline shift and Commonwealth's decision to end the statewide mask mandate, I'm advocating for the school committee also to amend the local mask policy to reflect a mask official policy to this. I look forward to discussions, and I hope the whole court continues making this progress. Secondly, unless specifically adequate, I would like to end reporting on COVID-19 as I have been doing as of the April 12 meeting. Instead, appoint the committee and the public to a place where all districts are reporting their cases weekly for students and staff. And the URL there is a website that we report to, and it's aggregated for the whole state. So you can see all the numbers for every district of the state. Each week on Wednesday, we report the COVID-19 cases that are reported to us over the week to desk. You can view state, district level data, and the data pool goes back to October 2021. After April 12, if I feel the committee should be aware of any trending cases, I notify the committee immediately and report on that issue. So I am asking you for permission to do that, if that's okay with the committee.
Any objection? CNN, that's good, Mr. Superintendent.
My second item tonight is the future educators at MPS. I'm proud to announce that 12 seniors will be taking advantage of the program that matches our MPS students in good standing to graduate with teachers to promote the field of education. Teacher interest in having an MHS senior in their class doubled in the student interest in the program, and we're very pleased that this program is continuing to grow. Students will also benefit from additional professional development resources through the state educator rising program. If we can't continue with this program, in a few years' time, we hope to be recruiting back some of our graduates to teach in Marlboro Public Schools from this same cohort of students. Thank you to the educators who volunteered to have the students with them, and to Patty Brown for continuing to support this program. Patty's here tonight. She's done a lot of work on this, so I want to thank her publicly.
Thank you, Patty.
My third item is the FY23 budget. As we have completed the budget workshop, the FY23 budget is in the hands of the school committee. Tonight, as you deliberate on our FY23 budget, I want to take a moment to thank the many teachers, supervisors, principals, and my cabinet for many hours of work of getting our strategic priorities into actionable budget requests. So thank you very much to everyone for their efforts. Our fourth item is to let the committee know, and I think you do know at this point, that there is a NIASC visit coming up. So NIASC is one of the accreditation groups that the high school and the middle school work with, and they visit usually on five- and 10-year cycles. So we are up for our visit. So what they're asking for is to have time with the school committee. I think either Patty Sibilio or Dr. Riley have reached out to you, and we started to actually send the Zoom links and get that out to you. This was just a reminder, it's coming. My fifth item, so on our action item for this evening, you're going to see a request to approve a sponsorship grant in the amount of $97,350 from Quest Diagnostics. We intend to do a formal presentation at the March 22 meeting for the school committee and to invite our partners to be present so we can thank them for this sponsorship. This generous sponsorship will remove barriers for participating students to access SAT and AP test prep. I'd like to extend my thanks to Quest, but also to Trish Bernard from the mayor's office and Meredith Harris from MEDC for continuing to push us to think of creative ways to partner with the many local businesses in Marlboro. Dr. Riley did a wonderful job taking this idea and working with Quest to make it a reality. I can't thank Quest enough for taking the chance to support us, and I do look forward to the presentation on the 22nd. My sixth item, I do have a draft calendar for you to review. I do want to point out that we just looked at the MCAS testing calendar, which has now been released. I may need to alter two of the half-days in March and May, or April, I don't remember exactly when, but we may need to make some slight alterations for the next meeting. Major changes on the calendar is the addition of two early release dates for professional development and an early release date for students and staff on December 23 of 2022, the day before winter break. Those are the two major changes that you see on there. Look forward to any comments and suggestions. So after you have time to look at it, feel free to email me, and my hope is to bring a final calendar at the next meeting for approval. Lastly, there was a press release I wanted to share with the committee, and I'm just going to read the press release. It was written by Mr. Rosenthal, about one of our students. "It's with great pleasure to share that Jackson Clemens is selected to participate in the 2022 All-State Band. Jackson will perform with 500 of the most talented student musicians from across the state. Jackson earned this recognition by going through two very rigorous auditions, one at the district level, where over 4,000 students are represented, and then if recommended, they move to the all-state audition, where over 1,000 students compete for the honor of being in this elite ensemble. All rehearsals will take place at the 2022 All-State Music Conference on Tuesday and Wednesday, March 1 and 2, with a final performance on Saturday, March 5, at Symphony Hall in Boston. Congratulations to Jackson and the entire music department." So thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, for sending this through so you could see that as well. And, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Any questions for the superintendent? Ms. Matthews.
Not necessarily a question, but I just wanted to say that I did see Jackson's mother did post his appearance at Symphony on Saturday, and they had, he had a great time, a great performance, a great time. So congratulations to Jackson. We were fortunate enough, actually, to-
Yeah, we went to Japan with Jackson.
And I know we're accepting the Quest thing later, but that is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity.
Very excited.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? CNN, Ms. Murphy.
Nope. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is tonight's update on finance and operations. FY23 budget, as Superintendent Bergeron mentioned, tonight we'll be asking the school committee to approve the public hearing posting for the FY23 budget request. Budget request is for $69,479,713, or 4.24% over the FY22 budget. With the school committee's approval, the budget hearing would be held on March 22. Then the committee would vote during that meeting to approve, to end, adopt the proposed budget, and it would then go to the mayor and city council on April 1. Community eligibility provision, or CEP. As the school committee knows, we are part of the CEP program for lunch. CEP allows the districts to serve one free lunch and one free breakfast for all students every day, regardless of income status. We were originally approved to participate in CEP from FY21 through FY24 at a reimbursement rate of 78.6%. That rate's important for us. During this four-year eligibility period, the district is allowed to reapply at any point if we believe that that percentage could be higher. Based on recent changes in eligibility statuses for families, we believe that our percentage should be higher, so I'm proposing that this spring we reapply. I believe that our reimbursement rate will rise to at or above 90%, which is a big plus for us, but that would refresh our CEP status through FY26, which is, you know, another plus. Next item is school furniture removal. On the March 22 school committee meeting, we will be bringing forward an action item, asking the school committee to deem obsolete most of our existing pre-K through 12 student chairs and desks. This is furniture that we've owned for 20 or more years and that we are replacing this summer. The team is actively exploring options for us to remove the furniture from the schools, and having your approval early will allow us to start this work gradually over the spring and leading into the summer. Some of the options we are exploring include working with nonprofit organizations that would take the furniture at no cost to us. Thank you, Ms. Hennessy, for sending a couple of names my way for that. We're also working with online platforms, putting the furniture out to bid, seeing if there's any interest to purchase the furniture from us, and then worst-case scenario, we have to deem it as bulk waste and pay for their removal. So we're exploring all options and trying to do the best we can to do this for as little cost as possible. That's my report tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Diaz? Matthews.
That's very good news on the CEP for the food service. I'm making assumption that we have not heard of any changes to the reporting part of the accountability part that we talked to our legislators about, that we're still required to have them-
Punching in the codes.
Punching in the code.
Yes, there's no exemption for that, so we'll have to continue using the point-of-sale system.
But we've never received any further-
We have not-
-conversation or response.
We have not received any further-
So maybe it's something we pursue because-
Follow-up.
Or follow-through again, because I think if more communities start to get involved in it, too, one of the biggest things that I saw of it is just that extra time-
Yes.
-that it allows between the eating and then getting out to recess, whatever it is. I mean, five or 10 minutes is a lot of time.
Absolutely.
So I think we should definitely consider following through yet again on it, but that 90% would be amazing. So thank you for that.
Senator C.
Thank you. On that, do we actually want to put it into written form, you know, so we actually write a letter to them to make sure that we're really making our wishes known? Because I think your point, which we've discussed a number of times, is that the potential delay of needing to enter in, you know, punch in all of the numbers, frankly, we've heard from, you know, students that they, you know, don't want to stand in the line, they don't want to have to wait because that extra time period, and I think that that's potentially holding us back from having a higher percentage involvement. So I don't know. I'd be more than willing to go ahead and start a letter, like a Google Doc, and we could, you know, similar, share something if possible.
Ms. Boden.
Thank you. Are these federal rules or state rules?
USDA, federal.
Yeah. So there's-
But we can reach out to our-
I mean, can't hurt to reach out, but there's-
I guess my thought was not only reaching out to our local, but then also to our state senators and representatives, because they need to, the federal needs to know, too. And, you know, I feel like you can't get anything if they're not aware of it, and frankly, I don't think necessarily it's going to be on the top of their list with everything that they have, but we might as well at least make it known. So I don't know. I'm up for starting something if people are up for it.
Get her?
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. March 16 is a district-wide professional early release day. The professional development plan for this day is to continue our district-wide focus on educational equity. This month, we are introducing all staff to the Marlboro Public Schools instructional materials review process. Supervisor of Humanities, Jody Reyes, presented the Marlboro Curriculum Review for Bias tool to the school committee last spring. On March 16, grade level and content PLCs will be led by school and district administrators in sessions focused on this tool. Each grade level or content team will review each indicator as it relates to their content focus. Teams will be asked to identify additional content look-fours for each indicator. For example, a secondary mathematics department might consider posters or other visual and resources in their classrooms through those lenses. The Curriculum Review for Bias will be one tool the district will implement as we begin our annual review of curriculum process. Some of our tools would be more administrative-focused, but the Annual Review for Bias will allow all staff to be actively involved in curriculum revisions. I want to remind everyone of the Title I Family Nights for students in grades K through 8 that the Marlboro Public Schools is hosting. The first one is, will be hosted tomorrow night at the Whitcomb School from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. All the parents in the K through 8 buildings should have received two invitations to these, including one last week. The first session, tomorrow night's session, will be held in English, and the second session on March 23 will be translated into Portuguese and Spanish, with translators also available for additional questions. Free babysitting and pizza will be available for both sessions. Even if people did not register, they are more than welcome. We have plenty of room for anyone that would like to attend. Even if it snows, we're still going to happen. I did attach a visual arts update, and I'd like to review a little bit because the music department had some announcements, so we want to highlight some of the art departments as well. Two MHS students, Adam Hussain and Aiden Gracki, received recognitions in the 2022 Scholastic Art Awards, presented by the School of the Museum of Fine Arts at Tufts University. Their work was recognized by a panel of creative professionals as the most outstanding work submitted among their peers. Student work is judged on originality, technical skill, and emergence of a personal voice or vision. Students are eligible to receive honorable mention, silver key, or gold key. Aiden Gracki received two honorable mentions. Adam Hussain received an honorable mention and a silver key award for his digital art piece, and Ms. Baker, Supervisor Baker, included a photo of that art piece. AP Conference Art Contest winner, Daniel Macaloney, a fifth grader at Jarrett Elementary, is the winner of the first annual Assistant Principals Conference Art Contest. His work, which was also included in the report, will be on display at the Assistant Principals Conference on April 4 at the Doubletree Hotel in Milford, Mass. Marlboro Public Schools students represented in statewide youth art month exhibit. This virtual celebration, sponsored by the Massachusetts Art Education Association, features student artwork from across the state, and it will be viewable online starting March 14. The following five students from Jarrett School will have their work featured. From kindergarten, Ashley Chacon Chacalot. In grade one, Carol Suarez. Grade two, Augusto Garcia. Grade three, Emmanuelle Miranda Gasha. Garcia. And grade four, Owen Rice. Grade five, Walker Griffin. Included in the material is a link to the Jarrett Students and Statewide Youth Art Month exhibit. Finally, save the date. The K-12 Citywide Art Show will return this year. This year's exhibition is called Created Together, to celebrate the fact that we have been back in classrooms, reconnecting with students, and creating artwork together once again. In-person viewing of the exhibition will be at the Whitcomb School on Wednesday, April 13, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. They are also preparing a virtual gallery slideshow to make it more accessible to the community, and based on positive feedback from last year, they will continue to include some lawn signs featuring student artwork as well. So needed to end on a high note.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Ms. Senator C.
A comment, first of all. End with that one, that was great. I love that they're going to continue with the lawn signs. That's fantastic, so the community can really celebrate it. But second, I wanted to go back to Aiden Gracki, and not to rain on, you know, not acknowledging Adam Hussain's, but if you guys remember when the AP art test was taken, Aiden was the person that got the five-
Perfect score. Yep.
-which is really just amazing. So I just, I just wanted to call that out again, because it just, this is, this is really great to see, and especially during such, like, sorry, but like, a tough time where a lot of the arts were really taking hits, so this is great news. So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of February 1, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I should have brought this up before, but there is a line in the minutes that says the meeting is being recorded by local cable and is available for review.
Oh, sorry.
That meeting was not recorded.
You are correct. I apologize.
I should have pointed that out before. Apologize for doing it at the meeting.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion made in second to approve as amended. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Minutes of February 8, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation? Any public participation?
I have something I'd like to read.
If it's short and sweet, you can stand up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jade De Giacomo, 131 Framingham Road. I'm the father of three elementary school children. For two years now, I've sat idle and watched as this city and the school board has enacted tyrannical policies and mandates which lack any critical thinking or common sense. Instead, you've used political science and fear-mongering to further your agenda. Enough is enough. No longer will parents sit idle and allow the school board to make medical decisions for our children or to further harm our children, both mentally and physically. Coronavirus particles measure 0.125 microns. Cloth and surgical masks do absolutely nothing to stop infection or transmission of influenza or coronaviruses. Neither do the plastic dividers that you've surrounded our kids with. Wearing a piece of paper or T-shirt over your face to combat coronavirus is akin to putting up a chain-link fence to keep mosquitoes out. All this for a virus with a 99.9% chance of survival. Most children are and were unaffected from the virus, with the majority of them having similar symptoms to that of a mild flu or common cold. Masks are toxic. Most masks and face coverings, including cloth, are made with carcinogenic chemicals, including fire retardant fiberglass lead, polyfluorinated chemicals, and formaldehyde. Not to mention, they make the wearer hypoxic and hypercapnic, along with increasing risk of bacterial infections in the respiratory system. A CDC-funded review on masking dated May 2020 concluded, "Evidence from 14 randomized control trials of the measures did not support a substantial effect on transmission of laboratory confirmed viruses." Tamara Van Ark stated, "From a medical perspective, there is no proven effectiveness of masks." That's from the NIH, July 2020. The data is in, and it shows that infections rose at the same or at an increased rate after mask mandates were instituted. So why are we not following the science? By making mask-wearing recommendations and policies for the general public or by expressly condoning the practice, governments and school boards have both ignored the scientific evidence and done the opposite of following the precautionary principle. My biggest concern is of the mental health of these children. The masking and fear-mongering is having detrimental effects on these kids, which are unmeasurable using meters or trials. These kids should be only worried about learning and having fun, not being badgered about how their masks fit, or how they're wearing them incorrectly, or that they're talking at lunch while unmasked. These kids have fallen behind due to the shutdowns and nonsensical mask policies, especially those kids who have special needs or have hearing or comprehension problems. This is and was child abuse. A vote to continue masking our children will only further delay the development on all levels and continue the psychological and physiological damage. The COVID theater is over. Please use some common sense and allow parents to decide what is best for our children.
Thank you for your insight. Anyone else? Name an address for the record, please.
Arthur Minor, 97, Charmadev. I've called everyone on the school board, talked to a few of you, a few of you called me back. I appreciate that. I just hope that you vote to get rid of the masks and also follow the public health with the, with the buses and the vans, and make sure that they don't have to do it on the buses and vans also. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else looking to speak? Any other public participation? Please get up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Brianna Nielsen. I live at 327 Farm Road. I'm a mother of three children. One is a kindergartner at Kane, and I also have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. My five-year-old at Kane was vaccinated as soon as it was available, or I guess I should say, I'm going to speak requesting that you guys keep the mask mandate in effect at a minimum until we're able to vaccinate younger children. So vaccinated, followed all of the recommendations of the school board, CDC, had my child vaccinated. You know, he didn't have any issues from that, but I still have two younger children. I don't yet have the option to protect them from this virus. Granted, there is a high survival rate, but almost 1,000 children have died in the last two years from coronavirus in this country, and there's still long-term effects that we don't know. A study was just released, or is about to be released, it hit the news at Nature Magazine, or, pardon me, not Nature Magazine, a peer-reviewed study in the journal Nature, showing an up-to-3% decrease in brain mass post-COVID. There was a study, they had done some brain scans before COVID, before the pandemic hit, which provided a good opportunity then. They scanned, they had the control group and the non-control group that had COVID infection, and it showed a decrease in brain mass. I have a copy of that full study for you. I didn't bring it for everybody, because it's really long. It's available for free online. Also, I'm sure many of you are aware of the study conducted by the New York Public Health Administration, looking at Pfizer vaccine effectiveness in preventing contracting Omicron. It looks specifically in December and January, not on the earlier studies with the earlier in the pandemic, but at Omicron, and how it affected transmission rates in Omicron and hospitalization rates. One of the things that's really interesting is, earlier in the pandemic, the younger kids were at less risk of severe disease. Now, that's not the case. During December and January, or throughout Omicron, younger children, 5 to 11, were hospitalized at a higher rate of the older kids, 12 to 17. Now, part of the reason for that is the vaccine is proving less effective for them than it is for the older kids. The hypothesis for that current being that it's at a smaller dose. The younger kids get .3 microns, the older kids .10. So that is, that study's out, and more study needs to be done, but the fact is, it's not showing an appreciable difference in contracting Omicron and spreading Omicron for the younger kids. It is being more effective for the older kids, especially after the booster dose, but less, less than it was early in the pandemic, where we got vaccinated and we said, okay, we can take our masks off, we're protected from getting this. And it did work. Our nanny's mom got it, she didn't end up getting it. It worked wonderful for that. That was with Delta. But things are a little different now. So I would ask you to please keep the mask mandate, so that our kids can be protected. Pardon me, I had notes in my- One of the other things I noticed is, we've looked at, you know, it seems like we don't have any cases going on right now, because cases were so out of control a couple months ago. Our case level right now in Massachusetts is at the same level as it was when schools started and in the spring, both of which were times when it was deemed that masks were necessary to protect our kids. Additionally, should you choose to amend the mask guidelines, I would ask that you address specifically, in January, the CDC amended the isolation guidelines to say kids could come back, or people could come out of isolation at five days, but then they came back and said, actually, they may still be contagious, and you should wear a mask in any interactions up to 10 days. So it asks that you specifically address that time period when COVID-positive children come back into the learning environment, that they at least have to wear a mask at that point, or that there's some kind of addressing of that, because there is still that time between five days and 10 days that CDC's recognized that- that time between five days and 10 days that CDC's recognized that the level of virus in their system is lower, so it's a lower risk, but it is not like they didn't have it. There is still virus in their system and they are still potentially contagious. Given the fact that now we're talking about possibly most of the kids not having masks, that seems like an unnecessary, an additional unnecessary risk. I'm passing over here. I did not, I brought copies of the news article for the Pfizer study. Again, that's available easily online, and I've got full copies. I did not bring enough. I only brought 10. I didn't realize how many of you there were. And I've got one copy of the full study for each of the longer ones.
Thank you.
Again, those are easily available online. If you Google, the Nature study is a pre-publication release. The other one was published a few months ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, I close that part of the meeting. Agenda items. So action items, mask policy number 8.500.
So, Mr. Mayor, the policy 8.500 is coming before the committee tonight. I believe that the committee has a amended policy which, to review from and to make decisions. I'm not sure if the Chair of the Policy Committee would like to expound further on that.
Yep, certainly. So, thank you. So, one thing that I would like to note, in the agenda item that Ms. Sibilio had put together for us, there was one change that did happen as this was getting put together. So it notes as background, the federal government has not lifted the mask mandate for buses. Students will be required to wear masks on school buses. Just please note that that did just change last week. So I wanted to make sure that that language was said out loud and understood because that did just change. So knowing that we were going to have a discussion tonight about the mask mandate, which we, I think, had initially had that discussion back the end of January, acknowledging that we did not know what was going to be happening about the pushing out of the date. And then it was lifted to be February 28th, right the day after people would have gotten back from school vacation. And we had at our first meeting during February acknowledged that since we did not have a second meeting during February, that we would have our meeting March 8th be our discussion point around the mask mandate. And in that preparation, we pulled together a potential revision for consideration if, in fact, we felt that we wanted to go ahead and lift the mandate. And part of that would need to have a policy prepared, number one, and number two, an effective date would need to be discussed. So I would make a motion to move forward the amended mask policy that was in your packet and would welcome any questions or conversation as needed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things that I think everyone, either here in person or watching at home, should recognize are there are still two areas that are going to be required by DPH for us to have masking. One is going to be all school health offices. So that is going to be, that's not a local control issue at this point. They still have not lifted that requirement. The second is that if a student or staff are returning from a five-day isolation following a positive test, that they must follow strict mask use and conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day 10 of testing positive for COVID-19. So those, those aren't a local control issue right now because there's still regulations we have to follow. So I don't want to put words in your mouth, Catherine, but I think what we're talking about is a mask optional policy that if folks want to continue to wear masks, that they absolutely can, but they don't have to. But those are two items which are not under our control at this moment.
Right. And I would just echo that, you know, at least from the policy that we're revising and putting forward, we'd like to make a situation feasible that everyone has a choice about what they'd like to do to feel comfortable outside of those two specific areas that you mentioned. And so people can be supported if they feel like they, there is a need and a want to wear a mask, then they're more than welcome to wear a mask, whether it's student, staff, or visitors. Similarly, then, at that point, once we would potentially make a revision and have an adaptation, once we choose that effective date, then people that might choose to not want to wear a mask can certainly do that as well. And this was all based on, obviously, our numbers staying lower and move forward as is. So, thank you very much.
Entain a motion for discussion.
Move for discussion?
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Mr. Crusoe.
I just have a quick question. How about the testing kits and all that? Is that still continuing to be delivered?
We still have access. The, what we were doing before, Mr. Crusoe, if you remember, was the test and stay. Now we've moved to a system where we're providing the rapid test kits, and they're going home with students and staff who have requested them. And we will continue doing that throughout this school year. We have enough supply to do that. And we're getting a regular resupply from the state every week, or every other week, I should say.
So, I mean, there's no monitoring of that of any kind anymore?
When you say monitoring, we ask if, because it's not a PCR test, it's not automatically reported to the Board of Health, so we rely upon the parent, excuse me, the parents or the staff member to self-report to the school system if they get a positive test.
Yeah, just to make sure that was still out there. That's not, everything is not going away, just that part of it there. So, in the, in the event that this needed to be reinstituted for whatever reason, that decision now goes to who and to when and to how?
The, well, I'm not your attorney, but the committee's policy is the committee's policy.
Okay, that's what I meant.
So the, what I believe is the motion tonight is to amend the current policy to create language that creates a mask optional environment. And then in the, if you were to further amend the policy at a future date, that would be the committee's discretion.
And if I may be so bold to just add in, with this potential amended policy moving forward, we would need to set aside an effective date towards when we might want to go to the mask optional policy, right? So in preparation of knowing we were coming into this meeting and that we were going to be discussing the situation around the mask mandate, that's why this was put together, was to hopefully allow us to have a discussion. And if, in fact, people were feeling that it was something to move forward with, we would have a policy able to go ahead and, and be ready to put out with whatever date the committee feels would be the best date to move forward with from an effectiveness standpoint.
I think that date needs to be tomorrow.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
We've already heard, we've already heard yours, so.
So that, it's a little bit of a multi-layer, if you will. It's, should we choose then to make an amendment on the overall policy, which would prevent or, you know, it would change our policy that's on the books right now, and it would move it into more of an optional standpoint? And then the second layer would be around the effective date. Okay, just to make sure we're on the same page. So, thank you.
Crusoe.
What about other mitigation things we're doing now? Like, for instance, I happened to be in the cafeteria at the Kane School and noticed the setup of desks. Will that stuff remain like that for lunches or?
So, keep on turning my mic off. I apologize. I would, I would recommend that we limit or remove most, if not all, of those mitigating factors at this point. So, and, and what I would say for an elementary school, if you look at it from a perspective of what does an elementary school day look like for, for children, they are spending a lot of their time together on the rug. They're spending a lot of their time together working in groups. So I look at the mitigating factors across the system and I say, it does, for me, I'm speaking for myself personally, it doesn't make a lot of sense to allow kids to have story time on the rug, but not allow them to eat lunch together. I think that, that, I, I think that the right thing to do for, for that is if we have some things that have been working for a long time, you can reintroduce some of the things that we've done in the past. So I would, I would say, for example, not all the schools, we were able to set up desks in the cafeteria. Some of the schools, we had to use our existing tables and chairs, and we put up dividers. So what, what I would be doing is removing those dividers and we'd be going back to more of a traditional lunch serving and setting. But if you remember from the beginning of the year, this is, we're going to go in the wayback machine for a moment, but in the beginning of the year, we talked about how we were trying to actually speed up the delivery of lunch. We were just talking about, so we can actually get the kids outside for more time than they were spending inside. There's no reason to change that. That's a great thing. We want the kids outside more than they're inside eating. But I would say for me, I would recommend that most of those mitigating factors we would do away with, unless there was some circumstance why we wouldn't, such as we didn't have enough tables or we didn't have anything like that.
Mrs. Matthews.
To that point, Mr. Superintendent, I mean, I, I guess I would bow a little bit to the principles in making that decision as far, as you said, some buildings were able to use desks, some buildings were able to maintain things with dividers, but for scheduling purposes of lunchtimes and efficiency and getting the kids outside, especially with spring hopefully coming, it may not, the expectation is we're removing barriers, but it may not look exactly that way and leaving it to their discretion.
I think for some of the schools that we've, we've started to use desks, it's going to take some time for us to actually move all that furniture.
To figure it out.
Yes, hundreds of pieces of furniture. So it's going to take time for us to get there.
Mrs. Senate.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, might I be so bold to ask Ms. Berry if she could provide us with a little bit of perspective? I know that you tried to reach out to some of the staff to get some perspective because obviously this is something that's affecting all of us across the state, and I would appreciate your perspective relative to our staff and their thoughts on this situation if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I, there was a Survey Monkey put out for MEA members, which there are roughly about 475, and 307 members took advantage of taking the survey. There were three choices, one being to end the mask mandate. A date was thrown out of March 14th because that's the two weeks typically when schools were seeing surges after a vacation. The second choice was to keep masks until late April, early May. And the third one was to continue a mask mandate till the end of the year. And 52% of the 307 that were surveyed wanted the mask mandate to end March 14th. 20% chose late April, early May, and then 28% would like it to see the mask mandate go to the end of the year. And just some of my conversations and communication from some staff members, you know, a speech teacher reached out to me to just let her feelings be known about how difficult it's been, and she's not seeing the progress she usually sees with her speech students. She was one for getting rid of them ASAP. And then, you know, other teachers that communicated with me or spoke with me said they'd like to see the masks, you know, be more of a flexible choice for families and students to have them on or off because the progress we usually see by this time of the year, it's just, there's been barriers with them. So, you know, those, I would say less than 10 people did speak with me personally or email me, but it was 100% those communications where they think it's time to get, have it more of a flexible option.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your insight, and I wanted to make sure that that was something that you all were aware of because that obviously is an element. It's, it's everyone, so.
Mr. Superintendent. Is there, is there a logistical reason why it wouldn't be immediate, do it immediately? Is there, from, from your, from your job?
I, I would say that I respect what our, our faculty and staff have said about having it come off on March 14th. I would say, looking at everything we do, what, what I would ask and what I would advocate for is 24 hours to give notice to parents of the policy change and then have the policy be in effect on Thursday. The reason I would look at that is because as soon as, as soon as the public understands that the policy has been changed, I, I don't want to have any adversarial discussions about masking. I think we should try to change it as soon as thereafter possible. But there are, I do have to say, there are some parents who aren't watching tonight. So to then tomorrow morning, to understand that it immediately changed, that might take them aback a little bit, and they may not appreciate that communication. I think if I have 24 hours to give notice to families, I think Thursday is completely doable. I mean, would I, would I like immediate? Yeah, I'd love immediate, but there's some families who just aren't watching tonight. And tomorrow morning, if they understand this is the new rule, I think they would very much be communicating with me saying, where was the communication on this?
The Senate.
I would also suggest that, just like the logistics you're speaking about, and that was one of the reasons we moved forward on trying to pull together a potential policy, because we actually do need to go ahead and get this posted up onto the website, and we do need to make sure that all of our administration, all of our staff is aware and on the same page because communication is vastly important. So from an internal basis and external, we want to make sure that we're in lockstep. So I think to the point you've risen, like, I just feel like waiting until Thursday to have it be effective is certainly not going to be detrimental either way, and it provides an optional opportunity so that we can move forward on educating our students and, and allowing everyone to feel, you know, safe as possible. So that would be my suggestion.
Another question, Ms. Boenheimer.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that if people are symptomatic in the district, they can still go to the nurse's office and get tested, correct?
Absolutely. We still have access to the rapid testing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Is there other further discussion?
I do want to, I just want to thank the Policy Subcommittee for being proactive in, in getting this ready for us in advance. Thank you.
Ms. Berry.
Just to let you know, the March 14th date, I was kind of under the gun with getting the survey out, so I just had to randomly pick a date as opposed to what I thought. So I don't think any staff who voted yes to have it off March 14th is going to be unhappy with getting it off on Thursday.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion made and seconded to approve the new mask policy, 8.500, take effect on March 10th? Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries. Thank you very much. Budget of 2023. Entain a motion.
Doug, I'm still straightening out my papers.
I'll go for it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Mayor, as we mentioned earlier, this is an action item requesting the school committee to approve us to post a budget request for the public hearing. Again, the budget, we held the budget workshop on February 16th. The next step is to have the budget hearing, and this is just receiving your approval to post a budget hearing for the request of $69,479,713 for FY '23.
Motion to approve the public hearing.
For when?
March 22nd. March 22nd, I'm sorry.
Post the public hearing for March 22nd and take the budget up. What was that?
At 7:30 PM.
At 7:30 PM. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, opposed, carries.
Mr. Mayor, would you, would, would it be okay if we did a friendly amendment for that night and maybe had it at 7 o'clock, only because we're going to invite our partners from Quest Diagnostics? So I was just wondering if we could maybe just.
It's part of that 7:30 meeting.
Okay.
So if they come at 7:30, we'll deal with them first and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the MOA for the Marbo School Committee and Para Educators.
Earlier this evening in executive session, the school committee voted to approve the MOU between the Marbo School Committee and Para Educators on a reopening agreement.
MOU between the Marbo School Committee and Para Educators on a reopening agreement. And I'd ask that we take a vote publicly now as well, so a motion to approve the MOU.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Superintendent's search. All right, we're going to vote for the superintendent tonight?
So, no, we still have to do the search. Oh, you're staying? So, what we need to do is, we need to officially form the search committee, and then we have to charge the search committee with what they are going to be charged with. So, I have a motion to make. Should I just do that now, and then we can talk about it? Okay. So, move to charge, move the formation and makeup of this committee was determined at the School Committee Workshop on February 1st, as three School Committee members, that those were chosen that evening, Mayor Vigent, Dan Caruso, Denise Ryan, two teachers, Eileen Berry from the elementary level, and Brendan St. George from the high school level, a school administrator appointed as Angela House, the middle school principal, a parent, and a City of Marlboro administrator.
Who's the neighbor?
Huh?
The neighbor.
And we, we have identified a parent, Ayako Barnum, has agreed to, and then we were waiting on.
And I got way late, so.
So.
I'll fill that position in with a city official.
Okay.
The city.
Can we ask that you bring it forward to the committee?
Sure. I'll send you an email. How's that?
You probably need to send that to Patty for distribution to make sure we're not violating our open meeting law, or at least we just don't have discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, actually, I would guess it would need to.
Either way, okay.
Okay, so that's the first motion, so we can vote on that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, carries.
And make a motion to charge the Superintendent's search committee with the purpose of screening and interviewing candidates and delivering successful candidates as a recommendation of finalists for the School Committee's consideration.
Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries.
So, we have a search committee.
Fantastic. You good? Acceptance of donations and gifts. Donors' Choice Jarrod School, Ms. Hammond, $205.98. Kane School, Ms. Cole, $749.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Shutterfly, Kane School, $1,405.48.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Are we voting on all of them together?
We're gonna vote on all of them together.
Okay.
Ohio Pile Prints, MHS, $84.51. St. Gobain, Whitcomb School, Mr. Rodriguez, $1,250. Quest Diagnostics, MHS, SAT and AP fees, $97,350. Thank you very much. Desi, FY '22, MPS, $6,329,126. Desi, MPS, $127,200.
Motion to approve all of the above and the substantial gratitude to Quest Diagnostics, which they will get there.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Ms. Tennessee.
I just want to call them out again, because I have to say, like, don't, like, as a group, I just want to call out Quest. That's absolutely incredible, fabulous, can't even give them enough. That's wonderful stuff. And thank you to the people that were putting this together to make that happen. So, sorry, have to.
We look forward to the presentation at the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Subcommittees, any subcommittee reports? Ms. Tennessee.
We are going to have another policy meeting. So, yeah, I know, woo-hoo. So, the 17th, wear your green, and I'll see you for policy on a number of different points, and I'm getting that ready to post with all of your items on it that you sent me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, Members Forum. Ms. Matthews.
I have reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
Thank God, we're gonna get paid.
We still have to sign it.
Any other members? Any members? Any members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Thank you very much.